The Cleveland County Board of Education meeting for Monday, February 14th is called to order. I'd like to welcome everyone and happy Valentine's Day. First, we have our invocation. We have Pastor Jamal Edwards with Shiloh Baptist Church.
Let us pray. Most high God, we come in the name of Jesus. We first pause to say thank you. Thank you for another opportunity to assemble and thank you for just blessing us to see another day. We ask that you'll please bless this assembly on this evening, that you'll give us wisdom and direction, help us to be patient with one another and to bear the faults of one another. We thank you again for this opportunity and may your will be done. For us in Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Thank you Pastor. You have our pledge of allegiance. Mr. Hunt?
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which you stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to recognize any guests that we might have. Do we have any principals or assistant principals with us this evening? I see some are being shy. Thank you for, thank you for being here. Do we have any teachers assistants or teachers with us? A good crowd. Thank you for being here. Any NCAE representatives? How about any elected officials? All right. Again, we'd like to welcome everyone here. We have some special recognition. I'd like to call on Ms. Jennifer Aberley for our National Board Certified Teachers.
Thanks so much for allowing us to recognize our National Board Certified Teachers. The first group we have are those that went through renewal and those two that we have that can join us tonight, there were eight total that renewed this year and two of them were able to be here with us tonight. One is Penny Klotz from Crest High School. Ms. Klotz? And Jennifer Blanton from Jefferson Elementary. We have three that received their initial certification. Michael Carpenter with Cleveland Early College. Lauren Husky Shelby High School. And Ms. Barbara Olson from Township Number Three and she could not be with us tonight. So congratulations to these two.
Thank you. Mr. Pliss has some recognition for us.
Thank you guys for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I want to highlight some academic achievements of our sports teams for the fall, fall sports season. We have in your packet the overall team GPAs for each team that we had in the fall. I want you to know that this is the weighted GPA for the fall semester only. We use weighted because we want to give the kids credit for taking the harder classes. I think that's super important for athletes to be taking those. This, this fall season, we had 472 student athletes. And we, and we did the, in, in your packet, you see the, for football, we had Kings Mountain with 38 student athletes, overall GPA of 3.67. We had Crest with 30 athletes, overall GPA of 3.34. Crest won the conference championship. We had Shelby with 49 student athletes, overall GPA 3.27. They won the conference championship and the state championship. And Burns finished up with a great GPA, 3.06 and also a good season as well. Want to mention in soccer, we've had Shelby here already, 28 student athletes, overall GPA 3.83, won the conference championship, won the state championship also. Our volleyball teams, Crest volleyball, top GPA 4.16, had a overall record of 20 and four. And Kings Mountain, overall record of 21 and three with a GPA of 4.06 and Kings Mountain won the conference championship. In cross country, we had Crest with 11 student athletes, overall GPA of 4.42. Burns cross country, five student athletes, overall GPA 4.34. Women's cross country, Crest, two student athletes, overall GPA 4.68. Shelby, women's cross country, 11 student athletes, overall 4.36 and went to the regionals. Kings Mountain, nine student athletes, overall 4.32. And I, I have on my sheet here, all four of our women's tennis teams highlighted. Burns GPA 4.51. Kings Mountain 4.42. Shelby 4.42. Crest 4.08. All four of our county schools over 4.0 and the Shelby girls won the conference championship. Women's golf, Crest, five student athletes, overall 4.41 and they won the conference championship. Last but not least, we have our cheerleaders, Crest, 14 student athletes, overall GPA 4.35 and Kings Mountain, 20 student athletes, overall 4.03. Proud, very happy to say that every team we had, Cleveland County schools had over a 3.0. That was just fantastic, super proud of our student athletes and our coaches.
Any questions for Mr. Pliss on that? Think that's outstanding, especially those that are way up over 4.0 to...
Absolutely.
They're taking the harder courses, the AP, CCP and, and playing sports too. They absolutely should be commended.
Thank you. While, while I'm up here, I'd like to, I'd like to talk about the Love the Bus Week for bus drivers. Is that good with you?
Yes, sir.
All right. Big shout out to our bus drivers, our transportation department and our bus administrators. This week in North Carolina is Love the Bus Week and, you know, I just appreciate our drivers so much. Last couple of years hadn't been easy, but they keep showing up and doing whatever it takes to get kids to school so they have a chance to learn. We've got the best drivers in the state and I'm, you know, just super proud to, to be on the team. You know, I'm, I'm a numbers guy, so I want to give you a little data. We've got 165 yellow buses that run every day. We've got 24 spare buses and we've got 32 activity buses. Our drivers drive over 1.5 million miles per year. Our mechanics complete over 3,000 bus inspections per year. We pump 272,000 gallons of diesel fuel and we maintain over 1,000 interior and exterior cameras on our school buses. Our office staff routes all of these buses. They order parts, they pay for the parts, they document all of the bus maintenance and it may surprise you, but they get a lot of phone calls over there too that they get to answer. Wanted to, wanted you to know that, that our schools this week are doing a really good job of honoring their drivers with snacks, lunches and more. I've heard from many of them about their plans for all week to, to honor their drivers, let them know how special they are. One example, want to mention Lisa Fulbright this morning, the principal, assistant principal at Burns Middle School. She made homemade biscuits for all the drivers and all the bus garage. I want you to know I had a nice bacon, egg and cheese this morning. Big thank you to all the bus drivers.
Just one more item in the line of recognition. This is School Counselor Appreciation Week. So February 7th, excuse me, that was last week, February 7th through the 11th with Counselor Appreciation Week. We want to take the opportunity to express the board's sincere appreciation and admiration for the work our school counselors do every day. Cleveland County Schools is extremely fortunate to have been blessed with school counselors that care so much for our students, families and communities. So to CCS School Counselors, thank you for being the shining light and a beacon of hope and a prevailing voice of encouragement and positivity to our community. You mean so much to those that you serve and to the, and the Board of Education wants to say thank you. So thank you to our counselors. Let's give them a hand. Okay, next we have adoption of the agenda. What's the pleasure of the board? Motion by Mr. Fitch, second by Mr. Hunt. Any questions or discussion on the agenda? Those in favor, if you'd raise your hand. That passes nine zero. So the next item is public participation. We do have, I believe it's six signed up to speak. That's a little bit past our limit, but if there's no objection, I'll extend the time for everyone to speak. Okay? Just a little word before we start, because I, I think we've got a few new folks. Public participation is a time we set aside for the public to address the board. There is a three-minute time limit. There'll be a timer up on the screen. It'll turn yellow at 30 seconds and then it'll turn red when time runs out. We ask that you keep comments limited to board matters, things that, that we can actually do something about. And, I'm sorry. So we'll go ahead with the first speaker and that's Robert Williams.
I'm Robert Williams. I live in Fawston. What I want to speak to tonight is the subject of your, part of your subject of your closed session tonight, lawsuit, Wendy McKinney versus the Board of Education. Superintendent Fisher, Jennifer Wampner and Mark Patrick. Understand, that's gone from a state lawsuit to a federal lawsuit. When it was originally filed, maybe a couple of years ago, I went over to Gaston County, that's where it was filed, and got a copy of the lawsuit. It was 198 pages. Cost me $49.50. And since then, it's morphed into a federal lawsuit. And I've got some recommendations I'll, I'll make now instead of at the end because my time might run out. My recommendation is for you guys not to spend any money until this lawsuit's over. That nobody is going to give you a grant for misconduct by staff or the board. I know most of you folks were not on the board when this happened, but you're still the school board now when you go to court. There's a YouTube news that gives you a very little chance of winning this lawsuit. Now, let's say your judge, Max Cogborne, I don't know if any of you have ever had an opportunity to sit in and watch a court case that he's been the judge. I have. He is a no-nonsense federal judge. And a lot of cases, I've looked at a lot of cases between the county and the school board and, and community college. And it seems like your best defense is some kind of technicality. This judge is not going to be good on technicalities. I mean, he, he'll watch for the technicalities, but if there's any misconduct, he's going to let it rise to the top. I suggest also that some of you folks during this last few proceedings before a court date, that you go see what, go sit in on some of this, some of these hearings and see what it's all about. Because this is going, this could be a very serious and costly endeavor. And when it comes right down to it, you are the school board. You are going to be responsible. Thank you.
Next speaker is Brady Scott.
Happy Valentine's Day, everyone. I sent you guys an email, but it was late in the game today and I thought, I just better go and read it. So I'll get started because it's right about three minutes. Dear Board members, thank you for completing a facility assessment of our schools. It seems wise to look ahead to run our schools most efficiently moving forward. I'm writing to you today from three aspects. As a property owner in the Marion neighborhood area, as a teacher at one of the affected schools and as a parent of a current fifth grader whose placement would change next year if the decision was made to move forward. First of all, let me say that I am not completely against the plan. I do understand the need and the math. What I am concerned about though, is the timeline. In my 24 years of experience, I had the privilege of helping to open two brand-new elementary schools while teaching in Chapel Hill. Being a part of a new school is exciting, but there is so much work that goes into opening or even redistricting a new school successfully. Successfully being the key word. I have no doubt that teachers and administrators will rally and get the job done on the proposed timeline, but at what expense? Dr. Fisher has said a February decision would be the minimum amount of time he would possibly need to make this happen. Imagine how much more thorough our plan would be if we voted now for a start date of 2023-24. That would give all schools involved time to carefully choose administrators, then those administrators would have time to get to know each other and carefully choose staff. Once staff is selected, I can't overemphasize the need for staff development and community building that you would expect to see when teachers are coming together from various schools. If you voted now but waited a year to implement, these planning sessions and new school community building sessions could take place once a month or so over the course of the next year. We know that when anxiety increases, learning and productivity decrease. It is simply not best practice to rush this through on the minimum time allowed to prepare. Your teachers are overwhelmed. Adding more to the plate, which will inevitably cause a lot of extra time spent preparing the summer, feels insensitive. Voting now on a start date of 2023-2024 would also give schools a chance to develop appropriate curriculum, like advanced classes at the middle school level, as opposed to the six hours of additional gifted services that sixth graders currently receive at SIS. As a gifted teacher, all of my students fall into this category. There are approximately 30 fifth grade AIG students, including my son, who would need a solid plan, the best-laid plans, not something thrown together in a minimum amount of time by teachers and administrators who are already feeling overburdened. Additionally, having a year to plan the transition would hopefully allow Marion's school to be marketed and ready to sell at the right time. The neighborhood is very concerned about having a school sit vacant and what it will do to property value.
Ms. Scott, I'm sorry.
My over. Okay. So thank you for your time.
Next we have, and I'm trying on this first name, is it Tamara Hamilton? Tamara.
I am Tamara Hamilton, parent of a student enrolled at Graham Elementary School. When educators fail to acknowledge their own biases and assumptions, the hindrance of a student's developmental process is inevitable. Having good intentions is not sufficient. The actions are what will be seen and felt by students. What one individual may perceive as innocent can have detrimental ramifications. From August 2021 to November 2021, my four-year-old son experienced abuses by a fellow student diagnosed with autism. The classroom was not adequately equipped to mitigate these issues and as a result, I had to transfer my student to another school before his education experience could begin. The pre-K staff at Marion Elementary School carelessly gave this book to my child upon his departure, "Good Night Gorilla." The teachers and staff at Marion Elementary failed my son. They failed to protect him from the abuses of another student. They failed to acknowledge their cultural biases and they failed to know and understand the community in which they served. The actions displayed show that Marion Elementary and the Cleveland County Office of School Readiness have failed to see because they failed to listen. My first ask of today is that the Cleveland County School District and Office of School Readiness discontinue single-day cultural competencies training as a means to check off professional development boxes. Training should be provided throughout the year so as to end careless acts of microaggressions by using the following tenants of RACE, R-A-C-E. R: Recognize your own biases, ideas and stereotypes of cultures that are different from your own. A: Admit, acknowledge that there are differences in the treatment of people based on their appearances. C: Commit to being a part of the change that is needed and seeing that people are treated fairly. E: Educate yourself and others on cultural differences to gain more understanding. My second ask is that a functional behavior assessment be administered to children on the spectrum to gain a better understanding of potential triggers for students with behavioral and/or developmental disorders so as to determine if the child is ready for public school spaces. In these public school spaces, it should also be required that a one-on-one aide be available for children with like disorders so that when necessary, the student may have a sensory break, direct instruction or access to a less distracting environment as needed. Parents should never have to worry about their children while in care of the Cleveland County schools. I would like to send my deepest thanks to Mrs. Addison and Mrs. Sparrow for caring for my son and alleviating my concerns. This transition to Graham Elementary School has been absolutely flawless. Thank you.
Dr. Fisher, is there someone on staff we could have talk with Ms. Hamilton and get her details so that we can... Okay. Mr. Porter, thank you. Fourth speaker is Ms. Nanette Lenhart.
And a happy Valentine's Day to you too. Not to burst a bubble on the achievement of the athletes, but 50% of all North Carolina students are not performing at grade level. Let me say that again. 50% of all North Carolina students are not performing at grade level. This information is sourced from North Carolina DPI, January 2022. And I noticed that we've got a TPA, I think that's right. Anyway, looking at Item 6, Finance and Personnel Report, the Item 6.04 is Education Direction. I think that's that TPA contract. Why are we going out of state to help our kids here in Cleveland County to get contract big companies? I haven't even looked at the contract, but I can only imagine, we're talking about a lot of money. Why are we going out of state? We've got qualified professionals here in North Carolina. So, and I just wanted to make a comment about that. And I'd love for the board to consider going back to two meetings a month. I mean, for the sake of parents and taxpayers, we got parents working two jobs, you know? I'm just wanting to see the board reconsider that. And, you know, for the sake of parents and taxpayers, we need to hear from you and you need to hear from the parents. That's why our kids are in school. You need to hear from the parents. And I guess that's all I've got for right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Charlie Holdscall.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board members, good evening. Charlie Holdscall, 3806 Harris Creek, Landale, North Carolina. You may be wondering why I'm here, to talk about school zoning in Shelby. I'm by way of 715 Westover Terrace in Shelby. That's where I grew up, attended Graham Elementary School. That's my neighborhood, that's my community, always will be my, my neighborhood. I want to thank you all for what you do for our community. Public schools is in my heart and I thank you for what you do. On February the 6th, I emailed you a letter voicing my concerns about the potential closing of Graham Elementary and the reasons I believe it was not in the best interest of the students, families and community. Since that time, I had the opportunity to speak to some folks and I appreciate Dr. Fisher taking time to enlighten me a little bit. Talked about declining enrollment, talked about test scores and scoring issues, things of that nature. I understand all that, but still I oppose the idea of closing Graham Elementary School. I attended Graham, as I said, I've lived or worked in that community now for 54 years. I think I understand that community. I just worry and it concerns me what will be the impact on those children if they're taken out of the community, that they reside all the way across town to Post Road. We're losing, we're going to be leaving a huge void through the center of Shelby with Graham and Marion Elementary closing. Geographical, yeah, it's quite enormous, quite honestly. So I'm concerned about that. I think it'll have a dramatic effect on these children and their families. I worry about their sense of belonging, being moved to a different school across town and also their self-esteem. Closing Graham School, in my opinion, is the last thing that West Shelby needs. West Shelby needs a star. West Shelby needs something shiny. Everyone's read about Pinnacle Classical Academy getting ready to spend $15 million to invest in schools. That's a huge investment. I feel like public schools are going to have to meet those kinds of challenges. In sports terms, when you're recruiting athletes, students or whatever, you better build, you better meet the standards of the competition or you're allowed to lose your students. The current situation can be viewed as a challenge and the quickest and easiest thing to do maybe is to close some schools and move some kids around. Or the current situation can be looked at as opportunity. An opportunity that we, Cleveland County, can do something extraordinary with a 38, 33-acre campus over here in West Shelby. I think it's a great opportunity. It could be something, it could be a new Graham School, it could be something more than that for the education of the children in, in the community. In conclusion, please, let's not, let's not punt the football and close Graham just because the building's old and enrollment's dropped. Now's the perfect time for Cleveland County Schools to show his commitment to the future and look at every avenue for the best of the children. In order to do this, I simply ask maybe the board consider tabling the matter until the community can be engaged and every alternative be explored that will keep Graham Elementary open to the public. Thank you very much.
Last we have Pete and Cheryl Maycomson.
That was turned in by mistake. We basically had this to adjourn.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Next we have approval of the minutes of previous meetings. There are five sets of minutes. Is there any objection to taking all five at once?
Yes.
Okay. You want to separate all five?
I want to separate the closed sessions.
Okay. Well, let's just go ahead and go through them one at a time. The first is approval of the minutes of the January 10th business in closed session. What's the pleasure of the board? Motion by Mr. Fitch, second by Mr. Hunt. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, if you'd raise your hand? Any opposed? That's eight to one.
My, my question was that I want to make sure from now on that our minutes is kept accurately, that so we know everything that was said or went on in a closed session.
I, I believe they are. Section 5.02 is approval of the minutes of the January 10th closed session. What's the pleasure of the board?
Need to approve.
Motion by Mr. Umpfress.
Second.
Was that you, Mr. Fitch? Okay. Second by Mr. Fitch. Those in favor of the closed session minutes, if you'd raise your hand? Any opposed? Carries eight to one.
Same thing.
5.03 is approval of the minutes of the January 21st called meeting. That was for the auditoriums. What's the pleasure of the board? What's the pleasure of the board? Motion by Mr. Taylor.
Second.
Second by, I almost forgot your name, Mr. Shores. Any, any questions on those minutes? Yes, Mr. Blanton.
I think I didn't approve the numbers, and I feel like we should have put it back out for bid, and I believe I made that statement. And I didn't see it in, I didn't see it when I was reading the minutes.
Well, that may be... Let's see, we got ones... Well, that would not have been in the open session. It would have been in the closed session because we were only in open for about three minutes before we went into closed. Okay.
They said they need to turn the mics on.
All right, we've got a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the January 21st meeting. Those in favor, if you'd raise your hand? Any opposed? That carries eight to one. Next is approval of the minutes of the January 21st closed session. What's the pleasure of the board? Motion by Mr. Hunt. Second by Ms. Green. Those in favor, if you'd raise your hand?
I'd like to correct myself right here. I made a mistake. It's January minutes is not correct, so...
Okay.
I'll correct myself right there.
All right, we're on the January 21st closed session. Are you voting for or against that?
Against it.
Okay. That carries eight to one. Last one. Approval of the minutes of the January 25th special call meeting, which was a public hearing. What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion approved.
Motion by Mr. Fitch. Second by Mr. Hunt. Any questions or discussion? Those in favor, if you'd raise your hand? That carries nine zero. We move on to committee reports. First is Finance and Personnel. Mr. Shores.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Finance and Personnel Committee met on Friday, January 28th at 10:30 a.m. Dr. Anita Ware presented a contract for professional development services with educational direction for $93,800. This is part of the innovative partnership grant at Turning Point Academy. Written into the original grant proposal was funding from the contracted services for professional development and school cultural building. Turning Point Academy has partnered with DRIVE, which is part of education direction for the initial portion of the grant. This has been successful, and we are seeing positive results at Turning Point. The committee unanimously supported, supported the contract proposal, and contract will be presented tonight. Mr. Karpinski and Mr. Pless provided some information regarding the attendance in our Kids Around programs, as well as some financial concerns. We currently have five morning sites that serve an average of 32 students and seven afternoon sites that serve a total of 126 students. Cleveland County Schools has already supplemented the program $100,000, and Mr. Karpinski has recommended moving an additional $25,000 to hopefully get the program through the remainder of the year. Without substantial rate increases or funding support for Cleveland County schools, the program's long-term sustainability is a concern. The committee discussed the pros and cons of sustaining the program, including but not limiting to that Kids Around was a good and helpful option for parents, but was finance, but was not financially viable without substantial changes in the funding structure. The committee had no objection to moving the additional funds to cover this year's shortfall, but directed district staff to work on possible alternatives for the 2022-23 school year. Mr. Karpinski presented Budget Amendment 1 to the committee. He highlighted budgetary amendments made due to adjustments at the state and federal level, as well as moving funds that covered a potential deficit in the Kids Around. The committee unanimously approved Budget Amendment 1 as presented, and it will be on for tonight as well. Dr. Fisher gave a brief update on Cleveland County Schools' Esther Audit that was completed earlier in the week. The audit feedback was very positive, and official results should be available within 30 days. Dr. Fisher also gave the committee a breakdown of employee costs, including, including supplement costs. The information was requested by the county, and Mr. Karpinski prepared and sent the estimates. The breakdown included costs for this year, as well as projected costs for 2022, 2023. Certified and classified employees were included in the analysis. A copy of the most recent bonus memo was provided to committee members. This has been presented to the full board as well. Dr. Fisher spoke highly of the Finance and Human Resources team. They have worked extremely hard to make sure these bonuses were paid correctly and on time. Mr. Karpinski presented a one-year draft extension to the current audit contract with Anderson, Smith, and White. The audit has done a great job conducting the district's external audit, and Mr. Karpinski recommended that we accept the extension. With no objections, the extension was approved, and Mr. Karpinski will get the extension signed and the orders so they can prepare for the 2021-2022 year-end external audit. There's no other business. The next person, Finance Personnel Committee meeting was scheduled Friday, February 25th at 10:30 a.m.
Thank you, Mr. Shores. For action items out of the Finance and Personnel Committee, we have Budget Amendment 1 that was included in your packet. That is coming from committee, recommended for approval. Are there any questions or discussion on the Budget Amendment? All right, those in favor of the Budget Amendment as presented, if you'd raise your hand? And that carries nine zero. Next, we have the Personnel Report. And what's the pleasure of the board on that? Motion by Mr. Hunt. Second by Mr. Shores. Ms. Green, do you need to recuse yourself on this one? Okay. All right, what's, move forward. Those in favor of the Personnel Report, if you'd raise your hand? Any opposed? And that carries eight zero. Next is the Education Director, Education Direction Contract that's required as part of the TPA grant. That contract amount is $93,800. It does come from committee with a recommendation for approval. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, if you'd raise your hand? Any opposed? And that carries nine zero. Next, let's see, Educational Programs. You did not have a meeting this past month. But we do have Ms. Rhonda Binfield for a Career and Technical Education Presentation.
Good evening. February is National Career and Technical Education Month. Governor Roy Cooper has also proclaimed this as CTE Month in North Carolina. I wanted to take the opportunity this evening to share with you just some facts about our CTE program in Cleveland County schools. CTE courses are offered at our four traditional high schools, our four traditional middle schools, and also at Turning Point Academy and at Cleveland Innovation. We teach more than 70 different CTE courses within six different career clusters. We have 61 CTE teachers in Cleveland County schools, and we have a career development coordinator in each traditional high school. There are over 7,000 students in our high schools and our middle schools in Cleveland County. More than 5,000 of those students are enrolled in a CTE course this school year. That means 72% of all high school and middle school students here are enrolled in at least one CTE course, and some of those students are enrolled in more than one. Our high school students have the opportunity to earn certifications or credentials. We offer 15 different credentials. In health sciences, we offer CPR, first aid, and nurse aid. We offer three different OSHA certifications. Two in electronics. We offer three credentials in the area of drafting, and we offer three credentials in the area of Adobe. And two construction certifications for our carpentry and masonry students. I mentioned Adobe earlier, and some of our students in our Adobe digital class at Burns High School have put together and produced a video in honor of CTE Month. It's about three minutes long, so I wanted to share that with you tonight. As you can see, we have a lot going on in CTE. I'm very proud of our programs. We invite you to come and tour any of our CTE program areas and courses at our high schools and middle schools. If you'll let me know, I'll be happy to accompany you, and any of our career development coordinators would be happy to show you around as well. We have three upcoming events I want to make you aware of. You're invited to attend any of those. March 23rd is our CTE Honor Society induction. It's at 6:00 p.m. at Malcolm Brown Auditorium. We will have over 100 CTE students who will be inducted. You will be receiving an invitation to that event. April 7th is Career Day. Career Day is during the morning hours at CCC, and it is for all of our juniors in Cleveland County schools, whether they're a CTE student or not. It's all of our 11th graders. And then finally, on April 23rd is our Making It Work event, and that's where we highlight some manufacturing and engineering careers. There'll be 25 students from each of our high schools to attend that. That will also be during the morning hours at the LaGrande Center through lunch. And if you'd like to attend that event, let me know, and I'll make sure they have a lunch provided for you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is our Operations Committee Report. The Operations Committee met on Friday, January 28th at 9:00 a.m. Dr. Fisher presented a letter from Burns High School requesting that the new baseball building be named the Mooney Family Baseball Facility in honor of Harry and Diane Mooney. Mr. Blanton spoke in support of the Mooney family and all they have done for Cleveland County schools. The committee unanimously supported the name proposal, and the name will be recommended for approval tonight. Mr. Childers provided an update on current operations projects, as well as presented the Capital Projects Report for January. Mr. Childers updated the board on several ongoing projects, including the Burns Baseball Building. Updated us on CMTA's progress with the HVAC design. Dr. Fisher updated the committee on the progress being made at the Shelby High School Field with the Title IX updates. Drawings have been completed for the new softball hitting facility. Dr. Fisher spoke briefly about the state grant and the district, the state grant that the district received in the state budget for the athletic renovations. He also updated everyone on the progress being made on the needs-based public school capital fund. Additional auditorium funds will be requested in the grant proposal, along with some additional high school renovations. David Pless updated the committee on the pending sale of a piece of land to the North Carolina Department of Transportation. The strip of land on the side of the bus garage property is being bought as part of the Highway 74 bypass project. The current offer for the land is $109,750, and Mr. Pless recommended countering. The committee granted permission in order for Mr. Pless to negotiate and settle for no less than the offered amount. Mr. Pless also provided some information regarding the attendance in our Kids Around programs. I believe all that information was covered in Finance and Personnel. The final item from Mr. Pless was the presentation of a purchase order to purchase one new school bus. Mr. Pless reminded the committee that CCS issues the purchase order, but the funding comes from the state. The state reviews our inventory and decides how many new buses we receive. The committee unanimously approved the purchase of the new school bus, and that will be recommended for approval tonight. Mr. Wees informed the board of the district's intent to extend our wide-area network contract for another year. This contract is part of the district's E-Rate expense plan. This is only an information item as the expanded amount does not exceed any spending threshold. Ms. Brown provided a brief child nutrition update and stated the child nutrition team was beginning to work on food bids for the 22-23 school year and would have those bids ready for the committee in the spring. With no new business, the meeting was adjourned. The next Operations Committee meeting is scheduled for Friday, February 25th at 9:00 a.m. We have several action items out of Operations. First is the school bus purchase. This is coming from committee as a recommendation for approval. This will be one school bus. The purchase order amount is $103,936. Any questions or discussion on that? Those in favor of approving the school bus purchase, if you'd raise your hand? That carries nine zero. Next is naming of the Burns High School baseball facility. So the name will be the Mooney Baseball Facility in honor of Harry and Diane Mooney. Again, that comes as a recommendation from committee. Are there any questions or discussion? Those in favor of the naming request, if you'd raise your hand? I'm sorry, Mr. Blanton.
No, I'm right behind you.
Oh, okay. All right, all right. That carries nine zero. Next is our Shelby Zone reorganization. Just to give a little bit of background, the board contracted with McMillan, Pasden, and Smith last June to do a facilities assessment of all our school buildings. They have been through all 29 facilities and gathered data. The first part of their deliverables focused on the Shelby and Kings Mountain Zones. McMillan, Pasden presented a proposal to the Operations Committee in mid-December. Then that proposal was presented to the full board and the public on January 10th. There was a public hearing on January 25th, and a review of the proposal has three, three components. First is to move the sixth grade to Shelby Middle School. Second would be to consolidate Graham and Marion schools into the current Shelby Intermediate. And then third, attendance zone, attendance zones would be adjusted as needed to make most efficient use of the space at those schools. So that's, that proposal's been put before the board. Are there any, any questions or further discussion? Mr. Glover?
Mr. Chair, I have several questions that I'd like to ask regarding to this reorganization. Being part of... Being part of the reorganization about 11 or 12 years ago when we transfer or changed the Litts Smith Elementary School over to the intermediate school, a lot of those decisions was based off of data. And one thing I can remember during a lot of those discussions that we had was what was best for our students. I was always a big part of that decision-making. Over the last couple of presentations by the architect, I never did hear them say that. It was all basically about facilities, what's best for our facilities. But I never did hear anybody say this will be the best for our students. And that's concerning. While looking through this paperwork, I was looking at the guiding principles. And let me back up a little bit. When we, when we started that intermediate school over on Post Road and we decided to, to make that an intermediate school and put the fifth grader and sixth grade there, we based a lot of that off of data. What was best, we got a lot of information from a lot of experts that they really believed that the intermediate concept was really, really important for our students. And they had the data to back that up. And that was back when we first did the reorganization for the Shelby Zone. Looking at the guiding principles that was, by, by reading this, that was accepted from our administrative staff and the, I assume, the Operations Committee, they added in there that one of the guiding principles that we were telling the architect to do was we were wanting our schools to be strictly K5, 6'8" and 912". I should've caught this earlier. I'm beating myself up on it. I should've caught, I should've caught this earlier. I think that should've been a decision that was made by the entire board, that we are going to get rid of the entire intermediate, intermediate concept across the board for Cleveland County schools. And that never came before the entire board. It was just the guiding principles. You know, I was kind of upset with the architect, but the architect did exactly what they were instructed to do from our staff. And that was get rid of the intermediate school. If that was the direction, which evidently that was the direction we was going to do, I think we, we missed, we missed it. We missed the opportunity to include our parents, our teachers, our stakeholders and look at the data that said getting rid of the intermediate concept is what we need to do. And we're just now talking about the Shelby Zone, but with that information that's on the guiding principles, that's what's going to happen to the Kings Mountain Zone. And there's no one here from Kings Mountain because I don't think they realize that those architects, when they're looking at Kings Mountain, the intermediate concept, they're, they're being instructed for it to, to go away. So it bothers me that that information wasn't brought before the board. It was just in a committee and we didn't have the opportunity to discuss it and to look at the data. What was ba, best for the students? That, this might be the best thing for the students. I don't know, but I sure would love to see the data to back that up. Pointing that out, the other thing that still kind of bothers me some is, and I mentioned this to the architects, in their, in their study in 10 years, James Love and Jefferson's going to be over capacity. It would be a little bit different if we were saying we are closing down Graham and Marion and during that time, we're going to purchase land or, or tear down Graham and build a new school that will cover a bigger area. But there's no, it is, we're shutting them down and in 10 years, where are we going to be at? Now, I've heard people say, well, they don't really know if that's true. Well, if you say that you really don't know that's true, well then you don't really know if any of this is true. So you just can't go with that. But I'm just looking at the numbers. It says both of those schools are going to be over capacity at that particular time. So just, something just doesn't feel right. I don't feel like we've included the, the community enough in this engagement. We got some emails and I understand your frustration. When this was first talked about, I said, if I lived in the Marion district around that school, my first concern would be this is going to hurt my property. And I get that. It's going to hurt you. It could. I hope it doesn't. But I know we can't sell a building before we move out of it. I get that. But something about this doesn't feel right, that it didn't come before the board for us to have the opportunity to say, you know, the intermediate concept is not working. Here's the data to show it. This is what's best for our students. All I'm hearing is this is what's best for our facilities. And that doesn't, doesn't meet the standards that I have always run on in the past. So so I'll stop there if somebody else says something.
Dr. Fisher, would you like to address the intermediate concept?
Mr. Chairman, I'll be glad to touch base on that real quickly. You know, the, the concept of intermediate schools versus middle schools can be debated. There's a lot of literature on both sides of that. Earlier in, in one of our presentations that mentioned, you know, there is research that says, you know, we really ought to push fifth and sixth graders down into elementary school. And there's some research that says that, that the middle school concept is, is more appropriate. If you look across North Carolina, the vast majority of school districts in North Carolina use a 6'8" model for middle schools. You know, I know that, that many years ago, there was a decision to move towards with the intermediate school in Shelby. And I think that, and I'm giving you my opinion on this, both models can work. Both models work well in Cleveland County. We have a K5, 6'8" models that work very effectively in our Crest and Burns Zone. We have intermediate models that work well in the Kings Mountain Zone and in the Shelby Zone. I think it's, it's more about what you do rather than the model that you use. It's about, you know, a little bit of a coaching analogy. It's about the Jimmies and Joes, not the X's and O's a lot of times. It's about the people that are implementing that. It's about the, the good work that our teachers do, the good work that our administrators do. It's, it's about that work, in my opinion, that matters more than necessarily a great configuration because we've seen locally that those things can work in a variety of capacities. I, I think that, that one of the things that nearly, you know, has driven this, and I really, you know, I, I think that we agree completely with Mr. Glover, that we need to really focus in on what's best for our kids and what's best for the students of Cleveland County. I think that one of the things that we do need to understand is that what's best for a lot of our students is to have a great facility and to have a great place to learn. That learning environment is important. The, the quality of instruction is important. And I think that one of the things that drove some of the information from the input from the guiding principles is look at, okay, we have Shelby Middle School, which is a great facility that, that was built for about 800 students. And we currently have a class enrollment of about 450 students there. We bus every day sixth graders from Shelby Intermediate to there to, to play sports and, and to do that, which is fine. That's not a problem doing that. But understanding that our top, you know, regular ed facility is less than 60% capacity. And looking at the data, that capacity number will, will shrink over time. So those are some of the concerns from, from an environment and what's best that we also look at in providing information to, to be able to do that. I, I think that it's not, again, I, I know I say this, but I want to reiterate that. I think you, you can go across the state and the nation and find examples of K3 schools. You can find examples of, of four, five intermediates, five, six intermediates, K8 schools. You, you go look at high performing schools and you can see high performing schools of all different grade configurations. We have that in Cleveland County. Just a minute to segue a little bit, if you give me just a second to, to, to talk about instructional data that we see. Our, our end of grade teachers, 90, I think it, Brian, help me, but 94%, 96%, somewhere in there of our end of grade teachers. And those are elementary, intermediate, middle school teachers met or exceeded growth this past year. So there's a lot of good things that are going on in our classrooms in Cleveland County. So we do want to do what's best for kids. We want to provide that, that opportunity for students. And we need to, and part of that is making sure they're in facilities that, that meet their needs, that we don't become over burdensome with, with steps or old classrooms or, or things that, that really impede the learning process of kids. So I, I know it's a complex issue and I know it's not, regardless of the, the direction that we go, there's not a, you know, there's not a, a yellow brick road, if you will, that leads to the, to the land of Oz. But I think that it's a process that we need to continue to work through and provide the best opportunities for our students, not just instructionally, but from a facility standpoint as well.
In, in it, Mr. Williams, Mr. Williams, you need to, this is your one warning. This is your one warning. Please do not interrupt the meeting. Any other questions or discussion? Mr. Shores?
For us to do this same thing in Kings Mountain, we would have to do additions to Kings Mountain Middle School. Am I correct with that? To hold the kids, if we were to merge some elementary schools in Kings Mountain and do this concept over there, we would have to, it would cost us.
Yes, depending on what you wanted to do. There's, you know, you look at multiple scenarios. If you look at the attendance zone in Kings Mountain, if you wanted to just consolidate some elementary schools, could you do this? Yes, you could. Does that create some other issues? It may. So I think as we get further into the facilities assessment and we get further information in terms of some economic growth impact, then we'll be able to best assess what really we'd need to do in that attendance zone, i- if it is consolidate schools, if it is to move to a 6'8" model. I think there's still some missing pieces in, in that formula that need to be plugged in to be able to get in a direction that we need to go.
Would you agree in today's climate that it's just hard to get staff, teachers, teacher assistants, people to get in education field? Would you, was that a fair statement?
Mr. Shores, that's extremely fair. If you look back into the late 90s, there were some studies done in the late 90s that dropped, drew some, some really early concerns into staffing. And, and, and I was in education at that point and, and I wouldn't have believed that as well. And people at that time were saying, man, we got teachers and people could get jobs. But what happened in the late 90s, mid to late 90s began to, the, the people that were nearing retirement and the people that were coming into the profession, you had more getting ready to leave than, than coming in. And so people began to send the alarm in the mid 90s of, of that conversation. And, and it's not gotten any better. It's got progressively worse. And I think staffing is, is a major concern, whether that is certified teacher staffing, our, you know, Mr. Pless recognized, our bus drivers, teacher assistants, those positions is, is a constant issue in terms of staffing.
I've heard, so I want to get you to clarify, that we really have a hard time getting people to apply to Graham. Is that a true statement?
That is more difficult, yes, sir.
How many openings do we have at Graham?
Currently, I believe we have two openings at Graham. And to be fair, Mr. Shores, right now, we have openings at a lot of places, especially in the teacher assistant, bus driver ram, in the custodian places. I, I would think, you know, traditionally, there are places that are harder to recruit teachers, getting teachers to stay. We've looked at, if you go back, some, some work that we've done with our Title II money and to address some areas where we have higher teacher turnover, and Graham would be in that, in that category there.
Anyone? Mr. Blanton?
Are there any more of our, our schools that, that were having that same issue that Mr. Shores asked? Is, is some of the other schools like Marion or whatever? But that's not my main question. My main question is that did these architects, did they check out our planning and zoning and our economic, the development to see really what was coming and what was starting? Did they actually go to our towns, for example, Kings Mountain, Cleveland County, Shelby and Bowling Springs? I think every one of them, I know they have planning and zoning. I can't promise about the, the economic development. I know Cleveland County does and Kings Mountain does.
And I believe you asked that question last meeting.
I asked that question and I never got a direct answer.
Well, I think their answer was yes, they did that. You know, it's my understanding that they did. My understanding they looked at. And I think their answer was, if I'm, I'm going on memory, so correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe what they said was they went and looked at those that are permitted. If it was just something that was in the works, that didn't figure into their conversation. But if, but if there were permits and, and there were actual something official documents, I, I think they counted that. So I may not be 100% accurate on that, Mr. Blanton, but I think that's what they said.
Mr. Humphers can add some clarification?
I might be able to clarify that a bit. So I spoke with, whatever they're called, McMillan, Paston, I'm sorry. I'm trying to recover my brain here.
McMillan, Paston, Smith.
Yeah. Also, they're going to go back, right now, the city of Kings Mountain is Kendi Keese, their consultant, is reworking their population estimates coming up. So I believe they're waiting on their work to re, re-biz at Kings Mountain again for that.
But yes, I, I asked them that question specifically. They did talk with Cleveland County, city of Shelby, Kings Mountain. We did let them know that this updated report was being done. So they, they have professional demographers that do this sort of thing all the time, so.
Well, also, you know, we basically had two schools that showed like Marion Graham there. And, but I know we're just aggressing, addressing the one, especially, I ju, I just can't follow it because it was on the, on the paperwork that why go we just completely going strictly on the Graham and Marion when we had the same studies there too?
Mr. Blanton, I think, you know, when you look at the, the facility assessment and what you've done, we, we did not have any schools that were ranked a two in, in, in the Kings Mountain Attendance Zone. I believe that those are all threes in, in that zone. We did have that. The, the other thing that, that if you go back and, and I mentioned a few minutes ago, was really to make sure we're using our best facilities, the maximum capacity we have. And, and that's one of the, the driving things, I think, that we, that we've got to remember too, is looking at the, our, we have two schools that were, from a facility standpoint, were, were graded a five. And that would be the New North Shelby School and Shelby Middle School. And we want to be able to maximize those capacities to create that, that great learning environment. I, I had the opportunity near the end of last week to, to visit Shelby Middle School. We walked through some classrooms and walked through the halls there during, during that time and just was reminded of the really good environment that, that's created there in that middle school from, from the classroom environment, from the hall environment, the things that, that are happening instructionally in that school, which, which are very positive. Mr. Workman and his staff are doing a wonderful job with that. But just that, that instructional environment there is good.
Any other, Mr. Humphers?
Okay, Stephen, hang around. Let me bounce off of here. So while I've been in recovery mode for the last now three weeks, I've done a lot of reading, looking at studies from all over the country, from major universities. So, I mean, you're absolutely correct. There, you're all over the place from whether 6'8" is better, whether intermediate concept's better. The, I think 75% of the nation's model is 6'8", 1'5" and 6'8". The one constant I did find was that every, every study I saw said that fifth graders are better in elementary. The one constant I did find was that every, every study I saw said that fifth graders are better in elementary. Sixth is, I mean, you can flip a coin on sixth. I mean, they're, they're like, you said, they're just all over the place. And, uh, somewhere in there, I'm sure I've called you a couple of times. When you're laying around at home, nothing else to do, you call the superintendent. Um, so Cleveland County, we're evenly split now. And I'm sure I asked you if there was any difference and you, you stated that there was really no statistical difference in the results between the six eight and the one five. Is that correct?
When you look at, um, yes, that's correct. I mean, that's my opinion, but that's correct in, in terms of when we look at academic performance, look at things that are going on. Uh, just, and it was reinforced this past year, the, the, uh, the, the work that's happening in our, in our classrooms. Um, and, and I look at, you know, K five classrooms for my K five schools, K four classrooms in those schools, five, six, intermediate, six eight. Um, you know, Burns Middle School had, you know, I don't know if it's the highest growth in North Carolina, but I'd like to see a school that had higher growth in North Carolina because I want to visit that school with the tremendous growth they have across the board. Crest Middle continues to have great growth that's had over the last several years. So we're seeing that in our six eight schools. But I don't want to say that that's the magic bullet because we're seeing growth in some of our intermediate schools and in our K four schools and our K five schools. So again, I think it's, um, my, my opinion is it's, it's about the implementation. It's about who's doing, it's about the process. I think it's about things like having transition coordinators to make sure that, you know, when we have fifth graders that are now going to the sixth graders, that we have people and processes in place to really make sure that transition is good. Um, and, and that helps alleviate some of those, those burdens and concerns to be able to do that. But as you look at the research, you, there, there's a lot of it and there's a lot of different things. Um, I think, you know, emotionally and socially, you know, there is a lot of research that says you keep kids younger and, and not expose them to things. But there are also some things and, and we see that, uh, with athletics and that type of thing. Getting those kids in that middle school does make some sense as well.
So sixth graders can now play middle school sports?
For the last, um, I think it's three years.
Three years.
Correct me, right, three, three years. Um, sixth graders can play middle school sports except football. Um, you cannot have a, sixth graders are ineligible for football, but everything else they participate.
So in the Shelby zone, they're having to go from Shelby Intermediate to the middle school.
Mr. Bless has a, has a, a plan that transports those students from, uh, the intermediate school to the middle school.
And in Kings Mountain, they're on the same campus.
They just, they actually have a staff member that walks them from campus one to campus two, just across, you know, there's a playfield and a softball field, so they, they just walk there.
Okay. Um, the other thing I want to mention, at least one thing, um, demographic studies, that's population projections ten years out. I ha- I've never dealt directly with population projections, but I have as part of my former job dealt with traffic projections. Ten years out, it's pretty much black smoke and magic, just to be perfectly frank. You, you don't know the changes that are going to happen ten years out. Five years, you might be able to get a grip on. But, you know, Kings Mountain being a, for instance, um, five years ago, I would have agreed with their original assessment for Kings Mountain and it would probably grow maybe one to two percent, maybe three. Now, the latest thing in Kings Mountain because, because of the casino, because of a couple of other projects that are coming to Kings Mountain. They're estimating now Kendrick Keese, right now saying in the next five to eight years, Kings Mountain, Kings Mountain's population may double. That will make them more populous than Shelby at that point. So things change. It is ten years, I mean, uh, they're demographers, that's what they do for a living. They're consultants for our architect company. They do the best they can do. I was involved in the Charlotte Dollar Loop. Our, our, we had the best minds in Raleigh, the best engineers available doing traffic projections for the Charlotte, Charlotte Dollar Loop. The day it opened, it gridlocked. It was over capacity. You, there's just too many variables, so be realist, you know, being realistic. You have to plan, so you do the best you can do. So, uh, but Kings Mountain specifically, right now, there are north of three thousand approved housing units. I'm, I'm on the planning and zoning board over there. There's more every day, seems like there's a new subdivision, new developer coming to look at Kings Mountain and wanting to put new homes over there. So I'm, I'm not concerned that we may have one thing in Shelby and something else in Kings Mountain. To me, that's totally irrelevant. We've gone years with Shelby and Kings Mountain having one thing and the county schools not having the same thing. It's neither here nor there. It's like you said, it is, if the kids are achieving, that's all that matters. I don't care what building they're in particularly. So, I think I said.
Mr. Fitch or Mr. Hunt?
We, we had an opportunity to go up to Shelby Intermediate, I think, last week and observe several out of classrooms with their kids. What are we, what are we looking like in Marion and Graham? Do we have classrooms in those schools that, uh, for kids?
I can't answer that question, Mr. Fitch, with the information I have, uh, right now. I know that there are a couple of classrooms that we're using for, um, PLC or group meetings, professional development rooms, those type of things that can be converted. So I really don't have that information to give you specifically of, of how many classrooms that we're using from a classroom, uh, for something other than, than classroom space. Um, there, there are times in many of our schools that we use classrooms, uh, for tutoring spaces, which is important. Uh, but sometimes we can repurpose some of those things and, and use different spaces for some of that. So really specifically for the Graham and Marion school, I really don't have that information with me, uh, how many classrooms we're not using for, uh, what you would consider traditional classroom instruction.
Or any mobile, mobile units that they form this school?
There, no, sir.
Ms. Green, Mr. Taylor?
Dr. Fisher.
Yes, sir.
We've had, um, you know, we've had multiple e- emails regarding, uh, if this, if the restructuring does go forward and have we, do we have some type of plan? You and I spoke briefly about it earlier today. Without knowing, without knowing that, that if this plan is going to be approved or not, if approved, are there, are there, I, do you have ideas as far as how to engage community, uh, community leaders, stakeholders and whatnot and how to, what best to do with those properties if this goes through?
That's a great question, Mr. Taylor, and, and I think it's a, a extremely valid point, uh, from, from the idea of what happens to those schools if, if the board approves these recommendations by Millen Patterson Smith and we move forward with that. Because a vacated school or an empty building is not ideal in, in, in any communities. And we've seen over time what can happen when schools are left without. So we want to be, um, you know, we want to be very aggressive with that. We want to vary, uh, you know, engaging stakeholders early. You mentioned that, I think that's an excellent point. Uh, we are required to offer any building before we would declare it surplus, any of that kind of stuff. We would be declared, required to, to offer that with county commissioners. So that has to be our first thing, regardless of what this board would want to do with it. If we're not going to own it, we have to offer it to the county commissioners. Uh, if, if they want it, they have the right of first refusal. And then if they don't, then we can move kind of down the, the line. Um, I, I would recommend that we begin to, uh, really engage the city of Shelby and with there and the municipalities, municipalities, excuse me, um, in terms of their interest, working with them. From a school system perspective, we, we don't, um, we don't cultivate, we try to cultivate excellence in our classrooms. We don't cultivate economic development and we don't cultivate, um, those type of, of, of opportunities, entrepreneurial opportunities that may come from that. So we really would want to get, engage in, in some processes that makes good use of, of that building. Uh, we are required to follow general statute. Uh, we are required to follow our policies in terms of, of what we would do with, with, with buildings and surplus and, and those type of things. So I think if and when, um, the board moves forward with, with a direction for, for staff to work with, then we would work with our elected officials, both beginning at the county level and then at the city of Shelby level, the city of Shelby level to engage interest, to engage in plans, what do they have, working through that. Obviously, you know, even if the board decided to move forward to something tonight, and that's, that's, you know, it's obviously a board decision of if and when, but if the decision was made tonight, we're still going to occupy those buildings for the rest of this school year and, and, and through the summer. So, but that conversation will begin, uh, you know, early to make sure that we, um, really do right by those buildings and do right by the people that are living in that community. Make sure we've got a, a really good plan and we, we engage both community stakeholders and community leaders to make sure we're, we're putting those buildings into the best use. Uh, because while they are some aging facilities, there are some really nice attributes. And I know folks here from Marion, we've heard from that, uh, from the, from the Marion community. You know, right now, you know, the Marion community uses our walking track, uses those playgrounds, using that as, as a great community resource, which we are glad. It's great to have community partners that, that are, to me, it's like extra eyes on your campus to make sure things are going right and, and, and doing that, especially in the afternoons and evenings. So, you know, we hope to, to continue that, um, and work through some community leaders to try to figure out what's the best for that property. That answer your question?
Ms. Green, did you have anything? Mr. Blant?
I just have one to follow up kind of what you're talking about us engaging with the city of Shelby. And this may be a question for our attorney, but can we approach people before we put this thing open for bid? Because I understa- I feel the, the community's pain over there. I mean, I have friends that live over there and the last thing I want to do is, you know, decrease their home values. So, you know, I know we have to offer it to the county. Can we go to the city or can we go to some nonprofit? Can we do that?
Mr. Shores, that's a great question and essentially the answer is yes. The portion that we would need to be cautious of is if we decide to do a bidding sort of situation. You can't give certain bidders an unfair advantage. But if you're talking mostly about governmental entities or nonprofit, historical associations, those sorts of things, there are statutory provisions that would allow a little bit more discretion in how we would interact with, um, government to government. That's what, what the, the law specifically addresses. Once you decide that a property would be surplus, then you would have a little bit more discretion in dealing with your historical associations and nonprofit groups.
Mr. Blant?
All right. Um, uh, uh, Mr. Humphries, he, uh, brought up a, a, a great point, uh, about making a plan. Uh, I like that. Uh, we, uh, we need to make some plans. But did I understand the architects correct? They sort of took these schools as a whole and then that's how they come up with the numbers like a two, a three, a four and a five. Am I correct there? They didn't, they didn't, they didn't actually grade each school strictly individually, uh, each school individually.
They, they, so what, what they did, Mr. Blant, is, is they gave at the end and, and the information that you've got and the information that was presented and it's on board docs, there is a school grade or a school classification for that entire school. Shelby Middle is a five. Now, if you break that out, if you think about it as a pyramid, that, that school score is at the top. And then you break it down to the next level and, and there is an HVAC rating. There is a, um, a, a.
Safety rating.
Safety rating. There's like five different categories and those ratings have an individual score. And then from there, they look at, okay, let's take the safety rating. Safety rating, you're looking at lots of things. You're looking at fire systems, you're looking at handrails, you're looking at ADA accessibility, you're looking at all these type of things. So when you get down to the bottom of the pyramid, there is hundreds of thousands of data pieces and data points that actually go and filter in to, to that final score. So that final score, while it is a number that, that helps to rank that building overall, there are lots of things that you have to look into and say, okay, well, the, the overall building may be a three, but you have lots of areas that are a four, but you've got one area that, that is little bit more glaring that you need some attention, that the overall, the facility may be in really good shape, but you've got, um, maybe it is your safety and security or maybe it's your HVAC or maybe it's your, I think there was one about land, just the, 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 the actual, um, uh, plot and the acreage and all those kind of things. So some of that is, is that we can control and some of that you can't control. But yes, every school had their individual ratings though, that the rating of Shelby Middle is independent of Shelby High and independent of Shelby Intermediate or Graham or Jefferson or anybody else.
Okay, all right. That, you drove me to the, the, my next, my next, my question. How did Marion or Graham pop a two and James Love? And we, and, and, and they're, and they're not a party in it that a kid can't go in, but we got a school at Kings Mountain that kids can't go into. Uh, how, how can it rate a three when we've got a building there that, that the children cannot even go in? Now, the staff can, I want to make that clear, the staff can, but the children can't.
Well, Ms. Blant, that, that, that building in there, as we've, as we've, you know, answered before and talked to before, that building cannot be licensed and, and it's not used for kids right now. But as we talked about, this is, the rating is for the entire piece. So you may have this piece of that that you don't like. It's like going to a buffet and, and you don't like this piece of that, but you love all these. So you're going to give the buffet a high rating, but you really don't like this. This may not be, this may be an issue that needs to be addressed, but all these other things are really good. So we're going to, the overall rating of the school is good.
Okay.
Uh, but, but it's, but this one part of that building at Beth Ware, I know you're talking about Beth Ware.
Yeah.
But, but at Beth Ware, you've got a part of that building, uh, and on that campus, multiple buildings on the campus. Um, I, I want to say there are five or six different buildings on that campus, maybe four. But you've got one building over there that is, that is aged and dated. But you've also got this part of the building that, that is very good. So when you've got that building score, that is a, that is an overall score of, of all the components that are here.
Well, now I'm leading back to what Mr. A plan. Uh, I'm not for shutting Beth Ware down for one simple reason, due to what he's talked about, this, all of this growth that could take place. But we have a plan in place to make sure that we're ready to get that building fixed to handle that growth. And if we done to switch it around with those buildings like what we're talking about here and have that ready to go. And, uh, and then you check your utilities out. You, you've got schools with, uh, with, uh, the utility bills, uh, is absolutely ridiculous. We got schools that's got, don't have but sixty thousand square feet versus a school with a hundred and seventy and it's costing as much to run that school as it does, uh, one of the high schools, say. Just use that for an example, you know?
Well, there's lots of factors you go in there, Ms. Blant. You're comparing apples to oranges and some of that.
All of these factors would give to the public for the decisions that we're making. I'm going to pass on sort of what Mr. Glover. If everybody knows why we're making our decisions and it's not just one thing, it's multiple, that pyramid you've been talking about.
I, I think that's where we're going. I think that's what the process is.
All right.
One more thing for me. I saw Mr. Humphries' hand first.
Yeah, me too.
Per pupil cost analysis, we, we've talked about that. Graham is significantly higher than any other school in our system. Is that correct?
The last, the last piece of per pupil data we have, and, and I don't, I looked on my, uh, desktop and I had that on my desktop at one point, but it's not there now. So the last, uh, comprehensive look we did was right before COVID and we looked at that and yes, Graham, uh, the price per pupil was, was significantly more at Graham. There's, again, there's lots of factors in that. You know, there's, there's, um, your utilities cost, there's the size of the school, there's enrollment, all those things influence that. So obviously the lower capacity you are, you're, you're having to heat and cool that building. Um, so you're going to drive that up because you don't have, uh, as many students in that building. The, the, the visor there is not as high or bo- the bottom number on that fraction is, is lower. So you're going to have a, a greater.
But that's the best normalizing analytical method we've got to look at it per.
That's exactly right. It, it costs, you know, using all that from a data perspective, it costs more. it costs more, significantly more at Graham per student than, than our other schools. And that is all 29 campuses.
Okay. The other, other comment I was going to make, and it is kind of a clarification of what we do, I think, um, fiduciary responsibility. We're the school board. Our fiduciary responsibility is to the students of Cleveland County. And, and trust me, I've gone through this with my friends and neighbors in King's Mountain, over Central School. Um, as much as I love that old school building over there, I love the historic value of that school. I had to set that aside. It, it's not the school board's responsibility for historic preservation. That's not our job. Our job is to look at what's the best for the students in Cleveland County. Uh, the same thing with economic development. And I, I see that we're prob- I'm, I'm assuming we're going to do the same process. So, I mean, it's by the law. Cleveland County gets the first shot at it. In the case of Old Central School, they, they decided they didn't want it. Then we went to the city of King's Mountain next. Uh, the city of King's Mountain elected officials whose fiduciary responsibility is to the citizens of King's Mountain. In the case of Shelby, their responsibility is to the citizens of Shelby. So the elected officials in King's Mountain determined that it wasn't in the citizens' best benefit to spend that kind of money over at Central School. So I don't know what else we do, you know, as far as the buildings themselves. And, you know, maybe we decide there's a use for one or both of those buildings that we want to hang on to it. There's been no definitive answers about that that I've heard. It's, but it's a one step at a time. Our first thing to do is to put the students, I think, in the best environment we can. And like you've said several times, Shelby Middle School is the best school in the system as, as far as the, the, the newness of it, you know. So anyway, just kind of wanted to get that out there. But, you know, I, I feel everybody's pain. Uh, I felt the same pain with King's Mountain. But at the end of the day, I had to set that aside and do what was the best for the children of the entire Cleveland County, not just a particular city. Thank you.
Just shortly, Mr. Chair, thank you. Uh, I can't agree with you anymore, Dr. Fisher,
when you said that, you know, we want to make sure that our, our students get in the best facilities that we have. And there's no doubt Shelby Middle School is, you know, a top-notch facility that we have there and there is some open classrooms. But I also don't want to mislead anybody of moving students from Graham Elementary and Marion Elementary over to the new Shelby Intermediate School on Post Road, that they are actually moving into a whole lot better facility. Yeah, there's parts that's nice. Okay? There's parts that are really nice. You know, I'm looking at the paperwork. It, it shows that that school was built in 1987. I'm not sure where they came up with 1987 because there's like three or four different parts. One part, I think, I've tried to do some research, is probably in the 50s or maybe older than that. Uh, there's one part that is the newest part. Uh, it is, it is really nice. Uh, but that part is going to, most of it is going to be taken away because we will have our pre-K students there. So for us to say that we're moving our kids from Graham to Marion, moving them into a really nice facility, they're probably second grade till fifth grade will never get to be on that nice new hall, ever. They will be in the older part of the school. So I don't want to mislead anybody that, that some of it is nice, but I think there's, if that's the direction that the board goes, there needs to be some work on that one particular building. I mean, years ago, we, we were in discussion that that needed to be torn out and now we're putting students back in it. So things change, as Mr. Humphries say. You just, you just never know. Things change. It hurts a little bit. You got, I, that when I look at it, when you take Graham Elementary and you take Marion Elementary, your traditional neighborhood schools are gone. I mean, they're gone. If you, if you look back into history, uh, the, the new Shelby Elementary that we're calling on Post Road right now, that used to be a county school, wasn't even a city school. You know, it was not even a city school. That was a county school. If you look at, um, uh, that school, it's close, not too far from the city limits. If you look at James Love, you drive another probably mile, mile and a half, you're going to be outside of city limits. If you look at Jefferson, you go, you go probably mile and a half, two miles, you're going to be outside of city limits. There's no core elementary schools, that is. Typically Shelby, the old, good old neighborhood Shelby School. And, uh, I know things change, but man, ain't nothing like a good old neighborhood elementary school. And I, uh, one thing I've always said, Graham Elementary is the prettiest campus we have in Cleveland County. It might be an old school, but man, that thing, campus is beautiful once you get into that. The last point that I will say, and I will be quiet, is I wonder what our big rush is. That's concerning me. Why, why are we on a fast pace? When we say that, you know, we're going to continue for the, the school year, when you say year, year sounds like a long time. In less than six months, those buildings are going to be empty. Because we're in February and school's going to start in August. So in six months, we're going to have to rock and roll if that's what the direction. And it's not that we just got to get Shelby Intermediate taken care of to make it an elementary school. We're going to have to move classrooms at James Love. There's classrooms going to be, have to change at Jefferson. The traffic flow's going to escalate because you're going to have more students at those schools. Just a lot, lot of things that are rotating that I, do, do I believe in our staff that they can make it happen? Yeah, but it, it would be tough. And it just concerns me that we're in just such, such a big rush to get it taken care of in, in a six-month period. Six months, we got to be ready to teach kids. Um, so we're going to have to get it done a lot quicker than six months.
Mr. Glover, I can go back to one of your points you made. I, I think you're right. I think, and if I, if I gave that impression earlier, uh, talking about the facility, I apologize. Because, you know, the, the students that, if this approved, we will have students that, uh, are currently attending Graham, uh, currently attending Marion. We may have some students that are currently attending James Love that will go to the new Shelby Elementary. It's on the campus Shelby Intermediate. And you're right, there's, there's part of that building that was built in the 90s. If you, if you drive now to the front, you see the front of that school, that, that long hallway in front of you, that was built in 90s and those, that is a newer building. If you go, when you go in, you take a right and go down there, that, that building, uh, was built, um, I think in the early 80s. Um, and, and that's the trazo floor. You can tell it's older. Uh, there's still, it's still a nice, uh, a very nice building. You go to the end of that and you've had some classrooms that are added on there, uh, at some point. Uh, then there is that building, uh, that, that's kind of sits right there near the bus lot. That, that is old and I believe that building dates into the 50s. Um, you know, the, and, and being transparent, that building will be used for, for some sort of classrooms. While it may not be a, a traditional, you know, K-5 classroom, it may be. So we don't want to say it wouldn't be because you never know what's going to, what your needs are. You may have that. There, you know, I think the original intention may be to use that for some pullout. But there would be kids that are involved in those. So it, it, that is, and people need to understand that, and while we're talking about the Shelby Middle School, uh, that, that facility is, you know, new, it's less than 15 years old. There is age on, on lots of our facilities and we need to, to, to be looking at that and addressing those things. So I, I want to make sure that I didn't give that, you know, and that everybody would be moving to that. That would be really our sixth graders would be moving to that facility and then you would have, uh, K-5 in, into that one. So, and, and it is, I mean, you do, I, I think that's one of the conversations that, you know, there's a lot of stuff going on and, um, it will need to be, you know, from, from administrative staff all the way down through the schools. Um, there, there's a, the, the implementation is important. Uh, if this is approved and when it's approved, regardless of when that happens, you know, that implementation is important. It's, it's really good. Needs to be, you know, make sure we're doing a good job of communicating that, setting expectations and trying to, to mitigate as many of those factors that we can that, that take burdens off of our school folks, uh, and, and take those centrally to make sure we're, we're finishing this year or whenever we, we move, um, we finish those school years and then we're ready to do that. And even if it's now or if it's later, making sure we try to take as much of that off of our classroom folks, folks at the school level and, and try to handle that as much as we can from a central location. So, um, I think, uh, but you're, you're spot on that. There, there is a lot of work to do.
Any other questions or comments? Ms. Green?
I kind of got a comment. I just kind of want to play devil's advocate here because I'm, I'm hearing Philip and I do understand what he's saying, that something like this maybe shouldn't have came out of committee because there's some board members that have questions or, you know, want to have more input. But, um, I think the general thing I'm hearing is not that people don't want to do it. They just want to know why is it being rushed so? Which, I mean, it kind of, it does make sense when you start to think about it. Um, I guess the question is, um, how, we got the end of the year coming up. We got testing coming up. We got, we're talking about making these implementation committees and stuff. Do we have the people to put on these committees to do that, to take away from other things that normally is having to be done this time of year? Or if we do, if we do decide to move forward, but just to wait, um, do that give us time to meet with the community and the stakeholders to kind of figure out? Because, I mean, this kind of just being, it's not thrown on every board member, but on some of the public and the homeowners and different things. There may be some nonprofit people that want to invest in this, but then you're, they've got to come up with something in less than five to six months to be able to do it. I mean, a lot of people are still dealing with traumatic issues. They've lost loved ones. They've lost, you know, finances are down. Things were affected by the pandemic. So I guess my, you know, when I say I'm playing devil's advocate, how much will we lose, um, by waiting to implement something like this or maybe taking time to meet and say, we don't even know if we maybe want to keep the Graham location, tear the building down and build something new in years to come? We hadn't had time to talk about that. And if we go ahead and decide to close it and implement it for the next school year, is this school sitting there getting vandalized and things stolen and it's costing us more than it would just to have some students in it for the next year? Like I said, I'm just asking questions that people probably have in their mind.
Well, I think, um, obviously, you know, there, there is not a absolute time period that has to be followed. You know, this, this is information recommendation that has come up. We've discussed, there is not a, thou shalt do this. Uh, I, um, said before and I will, I will stick to that, um, you know, from, from a timeline standpoint, um, if we're going to implement this by August of '22, you know, we need to have information by the end of February to, to, to hit go and move forward with. Uh, if we get into March, you begin to get into a timeframe that, that just does not, that really creates additional stress. Um, I, I will, I would say, Ms. Green, that, that a concern I have with, with making the decision now to implement in the fall of '23 is that, that, over that 18-month period of time, what happens to our student and staff population that knows, okay, well, this school's closing in 18 months, so I'm going to go ahead and take my kid here. I'm going to go ahead and do this. I'm going to go ahead and do this. And, and I'm not saying, I, I don't know. That, that, those are unknowns that we know. But that does a concern to be able to say, okay, if this school's closing in 18 months, well, I'm going to go ahead and do this and, and, and that type of things. And, and we may, we may create an issue. You know, I, I think, um, that there are other options that, that if, if time wasn't of essence or this wasn't the right time, that I would, I would recommend maybe doing, um, getting some additional information, but not making an absolute decision for that. Because I am concerned about what that would mean for, 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 for student enrollments, um, uh, staff recruitment, those, staff retention, those type of issues.
Just to jump in real quick and address something that Mr. Humphries brought up and it relates to your point too, Ms. Green. Per 115C, which is what essentially governs the school board's doings and our responsibilities, our responsibility as a school board, um, should mostly be focused on at any point with any of our buildings, once we deem that it, or y'all deem that it is unnecessary or undesirable for public school purposes. Any, any building, any real property that we have, that's our job to make that declaration. Like if it's not desirable, not needed, that's the decision of the school board. And at that point, we would decide to dispose of it. So to your point, it's not necessarily the responsibility of the school board to figure out the plans for those buildings. I think it's wise to be good community partners, to, to think through those things, to speak to other governmental entities. But I just wanted y'all to know, per state law, the responsibility of the school board is to take evaluation of our buildings. And at any point that we decide it's undesirable or unnecessary for public school purposes, we can declare those properties surplus and then go through the state law process. So just wanted to make sure we're clear on the responsibility.
Anything further?
One more quick. Um, so I'm, I'm almost, I'm, I'm hearing binary things here and I don't think this is a binary situation. Uh, if we decide to move forward, that don't mean that we're going to throw Graham up in the air and say, who wants it? Or Marion up in the air and say, who wants it immediately? There's no timeline for that. Um, so that's correct, right? We, we don't want it to lay vacant because the damage that may come to the building, and it may. But there are other uses that we may potentially have for Graham, for instance. Uh, we're losing partnership for children out of the old Central School in King's Mountain. That's a wonderful organization. They, they provide books for children all over Cleveland County. I fully support that organization and I hope that we would have a place that we could potentially move them to. Maybe there's a possibility there. We're losing our maintenance facility in King's Mountain. We've got people, we're going to have to move somewhere. Uh, so I, I don't see this as being an absolute, you know. Marion, if I'm sitting on city council in Shelby and I look at that facility, the first thing I see when I look at that facility is a pop-up park for the community. Um, there are uses for that building. Uh, oh, I'm sorry. Uh, the city, if I was sitting on city council with the city in, in Shelby, Marion, I would see that as a potential pop-up park. Um, there's already parked basically what you would term park facilities there that are used by the public. I'm not on city council, I know, in Shelby. Uh, that's their decision to make, but I would, I would hope that the citizens in Shelby would go to them and say, look, we need this. If, if Cleveland County Schools is going to no longer need this, we need this as citizens of Shelby. We need this. Um, as far as the nonprofit thing goes, uh, the city of Kings, the someone in King's Mountain threw together a partnership in two weeks, basically, that I've, I think that's who has the highest bid on Old Central School. So things are doable. But yeah, I, I, I feel like we're looking at too many absolutes here and there's, there's flexibility. We're not taking our own flexibility away from ourselves by making a decision about whether to move forward with this, in my opinion.
Let me try to tidy things up and, uh, this is a, a facility study. We're studying every, every building we have. We are looking at the facility itself, the components, the infrastructure of that. We're also looking at the classroom size, number of classrooms, spatial utilization, uh, number of students. All of that is going into the equation. Um, at some point, we'll have this discussion on each of the four zones. It just so happens Shelby happened to be first and, uh, actually the, the plan worked out pretty nice with the facilities we already have in place, uh, based on the number of students. So at some point, we'll, we'll get to King's Mountain and Creston Burns. And I'm not going to try to read ahead or, or give any suggestions as to what I think the answer might be. Uh, we're, we're still working on that. Um, I would suggest to the board to, to keep this as clean as possible. I would suggest to the board, to keep this as clean as possible, that I would recommend, I'm not making this in the form of a motion, but I'm recommending that we have a motion to approve. If that fails, then we would send this back to committee for further study and be brought back to the board at a later time. And again, the proposal from McMillan-Pasden has three components. That's to move the sixth grade to Shelby Middle School, to consolidate Graham and Marion schools into the current Shelby Intermediate. And then third would be to adjust those attendance zones as needed, based on the space. So I'm afraid to ask this question, but is there any further questions or discussion? If not, I'd ask, what's the pleasure of the board? If you'd turn your mic on, please, sir.
I make a motion that we move forward with the recommendation of the study group.
I'll second, second.
Let me, let me clarify, to take effect in the, this fall?
Yes.
Okay. Yes. Second by Mr. Humphries. One more time, any questions or discussion? All right, those in favor of the proposal as presented, if you would raise your hand? I count six. Any opposed? Three. Motion carries six to three.
Ms. Chairman, if I may, I just want to say that I respect the decision of the board. And now I think it's the responsibility of every board member, whether you voted for it or against, that we make this work now. Didn't go in the way that I was hoping, but I think we got to come as a group and we've got to do whatever we can for our students and our staff and to make this move go as smooth as we can.
I appreciate that comment.
Yep.
I'll support that, too.
Yes, sir. All right, let's move on down. Next is the Highway 74 bypass right-of-way agreement. This is over at the bus garage. Mr. Pless has negotiated a sale amount of $120,000. That number was not available during committee, so we will need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Blanton, second by Mr. Glover. Yeah, yeah. We'll give folks time to get out. Okay, we've got a motion and a second for the Highway 74 right-of-way. Any questions or discussion on that? Those in favor, if you'd raise your hand? That carries nine zero. Mr. Pless, do we know how soon that will happen? I think the paperwork's already filled up. Yeah, so fairly quick. All right, we got a few more things. Does anybody need a break, or do we want to keep going? All right. Next is the school calendar. Dr. Fisher? We've got all the easy stuff tonight.
I was hoping I would get to come back up. So just, just a really quick recap. If you remember, I think it's in December, maybe January, we presented two calendars to you, both those calendars really adhered to the calendar law. One of the calendars, we didn't finish first semester until January. It was, it was a balanced first and second semester, but it, it didn't finish until January. The other calendar finished first semester prior to Christmas break, but it only had like 72, 73 days and really unbalanced. So through discussion with the board, the board passed a resolution really voicing their preference into local calendar control. But in addition, you instructed staff to create a calendar that met the educational, that best met the educational needs of our students and followed the calendar law as appropriate. And so what we did, and Ms. Wampler and her team, put together a calendar that we believe meets the instructional needs of our students and staff first and foremost. It does start prior to the calendar law date. You know, the calendar, proposed calendars you have starts school, has a proposed start date of August 17, where the calendar law says we can't start school till August 26. Other than that, we really, the, I believe we meet all the other requirements of the calendar law with the number of days, the number of annual leave days, teacher work days, all those types of things in there. And we do conclude the calendar prior to June, the date, the set date in June. The good thing about this calendar, it is not exactly balanced, but it is better balanced to where we will finish first semester prior to Christmas. It aligns closely with the community college calendar and the calendars of colleges and universities across our state and nation. We feel that this is a good calendar. We did go ahead, based on conversation we had in our last meeting, we put that out for public comment. Ms. Wampler has reviewed those public comments. Very positive public comments, very appropriate. It has some questions related to the calendar law, but overwhelmingly support of the balanced calendar. So based on your resolution and based on your direction of staff to create a calendar that best met the needs of our students and staff, we present that calendar. One other thing that I wanted to mention, and I meant to before I said that, was also, and I've mentioned to you about letters training. That is a training that all of our K-5 teachers will be, will be going through this coming school year. We also wanted to really keep that in mind. And so that's strategically putting workdays for those trainings. And this helped to, by starting earlier, we were able to put workdays during the school year to meet those professional development needs for our, for our staff. So, Ms. Chairman, members of the board, we recommend this calendar for your adoption for the 2022, 2023 school year.
Is it the 17th, starting the 17th?
Starting Wednesday, the 17th, yes, sir.
Okay.
A couple, a couple highlights of that is, a lot of people like to start midweek. You know, that first week, if you go five days that first week, that's a long first week when you hadn't been, so midweek. We've got teacher workdays after both of our parent-teacher conferences, which is a really request from our teachers and staff. We've got workdays at the end of the nine-week period. We feel like, and again, we finished first semester prior to Christmas. So we align with the college and university schedule as well.
Any other questions?
The only request I've heard this week on the counter was a three-hour delay after the Super Bowl.
Three-hour delay after the Super Bowl? We can play pray for snow, right?
Look for ice on that day, am I right?
That means Mr. Blanton, I got to get up and ride. That means an early morning for us. If we, if we do that, that's early morning.
Got to find some ice on that, buddy.
We'll just start riding after the Super Bowl.
All right, I make a motion with approval, the presented calendar.
Second.
Who was the second number to add, Mr. Blanton? Any further discussion? Those in favor of the calendar's presented, if you'd raise your hand? And that carries nine zero. All right, next is.
Now, can the state come back against us?
Sir?
Can the state come back against us?
No. We going to run fast. Well, we're not the only one in that boat. They're going to have to get several of us.
All right.
Central School, we did, that upset bid process has completed. The final bid is $909,655. There's a resolution in your packet. We just need approval of that resolution to complete sale of that property. Motion by Mr. Fitch?
Second.
Second, I missed, it was, I think I heard call him. Yeah. Any, any questions or discussion? Those in favor of the sale of Central School for $909,655, if you'd raise your hand? And that carries nine zero.
Another question on that?
Yes.
Is there a time limit that we can put on that? We don't want it to drag out forever. Is there, make it happen within 90 days, 60 days, or anything like that? Because I think we've had.
Mr. Glover, I'll have to check in to see if there's any way we can put a time limit. But what I can assure you is I'll reach out to the winning bidder and see who they'd like to use as their closing firm and go ahead and get the ball rolling on that so we can get a closing date set and move along quickly.
I just don't want it, I know we've had some talk about that in the past.
Certainly, certainly. I'll be sure to advise the board if it looks like there'll be any sort of delay, but we'll, we'll do our best to move quickly.
All right, thank you.
Next is the policy committee. They did not have a meeting since our last board meeting, but there are some policies for first read and approval. We have three policies for first read. That is Policy 4240, 7312, which is child abuse and related threats to child safety. Policy 4250, 7313, is reporting requirements and investigation of misconduct. And Policy 5120 is relationship with law enforcement. So those three are there for first read. There are two policies for approval. The first is 3205, academic freedom. And the second is 3210, parental inspection of and ejection to instructional materials. There's no ejection. We'll take both of those together. And both policies come from the policy committee recommended for approval. Are there any questions or discussion? Those in favor of Policy 3205 and 3210 as corrected, if you'd raise your hand? And that carries nine zero. Also, the safety committee did not have a chance to meet since our last meeting. So now we're back to superintendent's update. Dr. Fisher?
Do I still have 62 minutes?
Negative.
No, you do not. Three minutes.
Calling me out of order.
It's Valentine's. We got to get out of here.
All right, so I'll be, I'll try to be brief. Got my, my, normal, a little bit of my normal COVID superintendent update. This slide you are accustomed seeing, just as I did in January or started, didn't include prior to November. So you can see the number, the active positive case count increase. And then for the, the good news is, it is beginning to decrease as well as the contacts. And again, this is just active positive COVID cases. This is through Friday, February the 11. This is the chart that shows that data. This, the chart actually gets that data all the way back from August. So you can see the downward trend and then the spike there in January. We're looking at a positive trend as we get into February here. Active contacts, same thing, very similar trajectory of those active contacts. Active positive staff, we began tracking that just separately there in January. And you can see, just like the students, we had a spike there in mid-January. And we're trending in a very good direction for active positive COVID cases with staff. And so the, really the highlights from today, other than the really good trend that we're moving, is that the changes of the toolkit, you've, that's been on the news. I think everybody has heard that. But just to recapture a couple of those things, the toolkit has been updated. These updates go into effect Monday, fe, Jan, excuse me, Monday, February 21st. Just as a point of clarification, Monday is a workday for us. So you'll start hearing really Tuesday to 22nd. So if you hear like, well, it says they go into place Monday, they do. But students are in session that day. That is a teacher workday. So in accordance with guidance from the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services and Cleveland County Health Department, students and staff potentially exposed may remain in school unless two things, they develop symptoms or test positive for COVID-19. So in, in, in short order, basically what that means is there is no more contact tracing, there is no more quarantines unless you develop symptoms, become symptomatic, or you test positive for COVID-19. Tried to restate it that, that students and staff should quarantine if they develop symptoms or test positive. So the information to give out to parents and to post on the website has been updated with the Health Department, basically that highlights what to do if students are symptomatic. They need to see the healthcare provider. There are ways the healthcare provider, they determine it's not COVID, can, can write them a note for return to school. If somebody is symptomatic and does not test, they should stay out five days from the onset of symptoms. And then once they're symptom, symptom-free for 24 hours, they can come back, but they need to wear a mask from day six to day 10. And then students that are positive stay out for at least five days or when, or until their symptoms expire. And then they wear a mask from day six to day 10. And all this is highlighted on the fact sheet for parents and the information that we, that we will send out. We do, we are required to notify potential exposures. And so we get to set the criteria, how we're going to do that. So our, our recommendation is that we set that potential exposure notification for elementary, intermediate schools. A note will be sent home. A letter will be sent home that someone in your child's class tested positive for COVID. You'll get that information. Then you could coordinate and contact the health tech to see if there's an increased chance of exposure. But it won't be a contact. Just because somebody gets that letter doesn't mean they're a close contact. There won't be contact tracing, so to speak, anymore. But if there's somebody that's positive in that classroom, then they will get that letter. The middle school and high schools, because of classes changing and all those kind of things, it's much more difficult to track. So we will, the notification of potential exposure will be due to daily updates on the COVID tracker that's located on our CCS website. If a parent wants to know, for instance, well, Shelby High School, and they see that two kids tested positive at Shelby High School, and if you want to know your child was potentially a close contact, you can contact the school, talk to the Health Department, you know, say, my child's, you know, Ryan Hunnell. And, you know, that health tech can look and say, yes or no, they were not a potential contact. So that information will be available to, for, for folks that need that information for a variety of reasons. Any questions on the, the updates from, whether there were the data that were showing a positive trend or the changes in the toolkit? I know we were getting a lot of conversation and there was some growing frustration about quarantines and contact tracing and this conversation that happened across the state. And this comes from the HHS and their toolkit release, which will come official. Toolkit's out. That information is readily available, but that comes into effect next week. So the question happens of what happens if my kid is determined to close contact this week? Do they have to quarantine? The answer is yes. They have to quarantine through Tuesday. They can come back to school Tuesday as long as they don't have symptoms or they haven't tested positive for COVID. So even if you're a contact and you, you had to quarantine beginning on Thursday, you would have to stay out Thursday and Friday. You could come back Tuesday as long as you did not have symptoms or had not tested positive for COVID.
I think the main question I've heard is, so once this goes into effect, the one mask versus two masks, all that goes away? There's no?
Yes, sir. Because in the past, if you were double, if both people had masks, you have to, there's no contact tracing, there's no quarantines because of that. Now, a couple things, Ms. Chairman. The board still will need to take action about the, their decision on masks. And regardless, this toolkit does not change, nor will the board's vote change. It's still have to wear a mask on transportation. That still is the rule from Department of Transportation. So that stays into effect.
Any questions for Dr. Fisher?
This information either has been or will be this week loaded into our COVID portal and information that people can, can get with their website, get on the website, look at that. This update from the Health Department, really appreciate that Health Department team. We met with them Friday, right after this came out. And we worked through this process and they had updated the forms. So I really appreciate Heather Bull and her team at the Health Department.
All right.
I make a motion that we do a optional mask.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Blanton to remain mask optional. Mr. Fitch? Any discussion on that? All right, those in favor, if you'd raise your hand? And that carries nine zero. See, next we have board member comments. Mr. Glover? Boy, that, check his, check his temperature over there. We going to move on before he changes his mind. Next we have closed session. Do you have a motion, Mr. Shores?
So with the General Statute 143-318, 111, subsection 8, 36, I make a motion with the intention of closed session with attorney and personnel discussion.
Okay, and the consultation with the attorneys regarding the McKinney versus Cleveland County?
Yes.
Okay. Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor, if you'd raise your hand? That carries nine zero. All righty. Do we have a motion to return to open session? Motion by Mr. Shores. I don't know who I heard first, Mr. Taylor. Those in favor of returning to open session, if you'd raise your hand? That carries nine zero. During open session, the board did receive an update from board couns, during closed session. Closed session, excuse me, thank you. During closed session, closed session, the board received an update from board counsel on the McKinney versus Cleveland County Schools case, and we discussed a personnel matter. No action was taken. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion.
That sounds like everybody. Have a good evening, thank you.